All right, it is 5:30. We'll get this city council meeting for the regular, for the city of International Falls for Monday, November 1st, 2021. All right. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that all members of the council are present. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. I don't believe we have any of those this evening. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes. The minutes are from October 18th, 2001, our last regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deach. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to the adoption of the claims and approval for payments. We have a transfer from the, to the 101 general fund in $257.92, and that's coming from the 812 lodging tax fund. Regular International Falls claims of $1,080,191.28. Airport commission claims of $86,822.72. Airport runway claim, project claims of $17,260. Airport runway part one claims of $13,885.99. And airport part three claims of $1,640,51.29. For a total of accounts payable of $2,838,211.28. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion carries 5-0. Next, we go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward? Please, Trish. Make sure that the microphone's on. I believe it is, though.
On, yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber, the chamber board, our members. Quite honestly, in a partial follow-up to some communication last week, I'd kind of thought there would be an item on the agenda tonight about the bond request letter that I don't see, and so we were coming to hear if that was sent in and where that was, and if there was, you know, I guess I thought there maybe be council approval on a submission.
We, the approval for that was months ago when we moved forward to do the, to do the bond request. We're receiving, we're requesting a grant from the state. So, we, we have did that in committee forever ago when we hired Kraus Anderson to lead the work for us and for With Seth, I mean, the council's been working on this for the better part of two years. So, that, that information has been out to do the bond request.
So, I think that that's been really why also that we're here is to just kind of ask for greater transparency on this project, and when it comes to just kind of some of the city's spending in general right now. I mean, we're highly concerned about the economics of our community, and we do not trend on paper or in any direction positively when it comes to, right, like incomes and poverty levels and population and things like that about our community. And so when we're seeing city spending increase, your proposed levy of a 14% increase, the city budget increasing exponentially and putting that cost on a shrinking population, which ultimately double burdens them, because every time less people leave, they're picking up the cost also of the population that is no longer there. You know, the, the population loss, which has just contributed or continued, as your comp plan says, right, from like 1950 in this loss, that that just seems to be an imbalance of spend. And we requested a lunch and learn, or a really just a state of the city update, I think, to update ourselves, our members and others a little bit clearer with more transparency of where this money is going and what those costs are. I mean, I think that, you know, when we look at the city budget, my understanding is a part of this cost increase is related to an increased needs for roads. You know, the, the chamber just backed a $30 million sales and use tax of the city two years ago to contribute to that, which is doing, to my understanding, better than even projected. So we'll definitely meet that $30 million. So, at a, at a time where we are just, you know, we're coming out of the pandemic, we've got a lot of, you know, I think unknowns in how our business community is going to maintain and stabilize still through the end of this. There are continued, you know, manufacturing and other impacts, staffing shortages and whatnot of COVID that our business community, as, as others are, are going through to see costs like this coming from the city, which is ultimately being paid for by its, you know, businesses and taxpayers without a lot of clarity. I, I think we're just hoping for more dialogue and understanding on when that may come about. So, I, you know, sorry if you were gonna answer.
No, I, I'm still listening.
So, we, you know, the, when other major spending projects have happened, you know, the airport, the Highway 53 even, again, that tax thing, they all came with a number of public input sessions, informational sessions and things to contribute. And so, for you to say that this has been in, in the works for two years without, to the best of my knowledge, any good public just, you know, full kind of plan, like what, what incorporates $15 million? Like where, what, what is that service going towards? And how do we do that? Is, we're just, you know, wondering, like, when does that come? Is there a timeline? Is, is there, you know, how deep into the project do you, do you, do you get yourself before you involve people for input and support and other? And, and even in a funding, I mean, we, we partly did not ask for funding from the city this year of the chamber, because we've watched and understood financially where you sit. We've seen you struggle with trying to allocate money to appropriations and to other city and community kind of amenities and services and things like that. But this year alone, from when I was able to dig back through council minutes, you know, over $104,000 has already been spent and or committed to the Cary Park project, just between the Wood Seth Kraus Anderson contracts and the cost in. So again, committed, you don't know if you paid them 30 grand upfront or if that 2,000 a month goes, but right of, of where we're at. And I don't know last year. I mean, there were, you know, plans developed and, you know, renderings that last year I saw nothing when I went back through the notes. We don't see transparency on the city website of committee of the whole minutes agendas, public works minutes agendas, city budget minutes agendas, to really be able to follow where that is. So we've been trying, knowing that this is a thing for some time, to kind of wait and watch and see, like, when is the city gonna reveal? Like, when is this information gonna be shared? And so I think when we saw that bond letter last week, that just felt to us, and maybe it was a one-off, but like way ahead of a timeline of where we expected of seeking that kind of funding for a project commitment onto the community without community kind of disclosure.
So, I, I, I'd love to have this conversation, and I will. So, we're in a weird spot in, in a public entity, because it started with very first one when the city asked, asked for a public hearing or a public meeting about a dog park. And the public became very immediate that we have bigger issues that we have to deal with in the city than a dog park. It would have cost the city essentially $10,000 just to put a fence around a property that we already had, but the community said that we need to address other things first. So then we ended up having a joint, a joint meeting with the city and the school district about recreation in our community. And I know you were there at the dog park one, and you were here on the, the one for the recreation board. At that point, we, we took in consideration of all of our parks in the community, all of our venues that we have in the community, and all the sports that are offered locally, along with walking, hiking, bicycle trails, everything that comes up under the umbrella of recreation. Once we had that conversation, we realized that we have a lot of things that we have to fix. And I was just telling Councilor Holden before this that we finally just finished the last one of our parks in town, with the exception of Cary Park this year. Riverside was adopted by Rotary last year, or two years ago, and they have cleaned up and maintained Riverside Park, which was one of the issues that we had. City Beach has just gotten redone this last week. Carson Loopy was redone this last year and finished this spring. Eighth Street was done this year, and Green Acres Park in South Falls was part of a project that was put on with BACIS to be able to get that one to be redone. So right now, the only park that we have in our community is Cary Park that has not been, been looked at or not, I don't want to say looked at, has not been upgraded. About two or three years ago, about the same time that we had all of this conversation, we started looking at Cary Park as a building, and the city has a building that needs to be maintained, because it started off as a, a arena with natural ice. The entire shell of the building had big open air for wind to go through so we could keep natural ice. The Rec Commission got a Mighty Ducks grant to be able to make that into non-natural ice, I guess. And then they had to retrofit the building. Once they closed up those, those big air cavities for the air to go in and out and make it cold air, or keep it natural ice, it ended up condensing multiple times over, and it ended up structurally wrecking the building. The building's over 25 years old right now. The city was given two years ago $2 million to either fix, replace, to fix Cary Park. One of the questions we had, as we had just went through that whole process, is do you fix a building that's gonna cost us $2 million to maintain? Or do we find, utilize all the community information that we've received up to that point to fix it better or to replace it? At that point, we had a conversation with Rotary. Rotary was finding out at that point that they were not gonna be able to install their splash park out in Rainier, because they were not gonna be able to meet the requirements of the Department of Health to utilize lake water to be able to pump and have a splash park at, at Rainier, or at City Beach. So we started having the conversation with them as a vested interest. Would you be interested in coming if we redid Cary Park? At that point, the city put out a, a Facebook post, that Facebook post, if we were to redo Cary Park, what would you like to see there? And we got everything from a trampoline park, skate, skating rink, this, that. I think we had 290-some responses. We took all of that information that we had got from the first meeting, the second meeting, the, the information we received from Rotary, the information we received from Facebook post. We gave all of that information to With Seth, and we asked With Seth, if we were to, to redo what we have at Cary Park, what would that cost? After about, about six, seven months, they gave us a rendering of what it might look like, and they, they also said, at this point, we can't move forward with this, because this is past the engineering we would normally do. We had a city council meeting that ended up having all the city councilors. Were given the information from, from a joint meeting with Kraus Anderson and, and With Seth, having the discussion on having them as a, an engineer to be able to help us find out what the costs are. And, so I'm gonna stop the story right there. Because if, we wouldn't have done all of that legwork from point A to point B, and then we sat up here and said, hey, we're gonna build this, people are gonna ask, well, how much is it gonna cost? Well, we can't tell you how much it's gonna cost unless we hire someone that can tell us how much it's gonna cost. So then With Seth and Kraus Anderson gave us a dollar amount. I had an opportunity to meet with the governor. The governor said that if we put this in for a bonding bill this year, which we're already late, because we didn't intend to do this nearly as fast as we, as we are. But we were, I was told by the governor, you put that in a bonding bill, we can get you state monies. So in the last month and a half, two months, because we've already committed to moving this project forward, the council approved hiring a lobbyist at $2,000 a month to try to get free money. And yes, there is a cost to that free money. There has been engineering work that's been done on Cary Park. We're not hiding that. There's engineering work on probably 25 roads in our community that is sitting on a shelf until we can get funding to do those roads. That's not uncommon in any city. You can't apply for grants if, if a grant came up tomorrow to, to build a new something 100% paid, but you don't have the engineering work to be able to show them, you're not gonna get the grant. So just like every other city project that we do, we have been trying to get engineering done on the Cary Park project, on roads, streets, Riverside. We're working on Ninth Street and Eighth Street right now. That might not be done for another six, seven years. But we have to do this engineering, and there is a problem at Cary Park, and if we don't rectify that, we're not gonna be able to do anything with it. So we're in a weird spot. You can either build all the way up to the point where you can say, hey, these are our six or seven options of what we could do at Cary Park, and have dollar amounts attached to them. Or we can say, hey, we'd really like to do something. People say, well, how much is it gonna cost? We've had detailed conversations with individuals that are planning on giving money to the city to help fund the project, such as Rotary. Why I met with them last week, they've raised over $75,000, and they're hoping to raise more, more than that before the project starts. I had a meeting this morning with Senator Bach and with Representative Eklund. Both of them truly are on board to try to get the $15.39 million for the city. The concern that I think most people are gonna have is how are we gonna pay for $15.39 million? That's the beauty. That $15.39 million is gonna go somewhere in the state of Minnesota. If it comes to International Falls, there's no funds that have to come from taxpayers. Right now, we're maintaining a facility over at Cary Park. We're, we're maintaining an arena. And with that maintaining, we're, we have a agreement with Rec Hockey. We're hoping to have multiple agreements over there with some daycare providers to try to help offset the cost of daycare, so people have access to a commercial kitchen. We're also looking at having the senior center move over to that facility. In the event that the senior center moves over there, we're getting more use out of one facility. The city owns that building. We'll probably sell it. It'll be an opportunity for a business to move into our downtown. I understand that people may think that we're trying to put the cart before the horse, and we're not. What we're trying to do is have good, solid information for both the business community and the residents. What people truly need to understand is, there is no correlation between what we're doing at Cary Park and the 14% that we're talking about increase. There is no funds that are going to be going to the Cary Park project that would not be already going over there for the maintaining of the arena. And you touched on, you touched on the, you touched on the city sales tax. You're, you're spot on. And I want people to understand about the city sales tax, too. That is to fix the roads, sewer, infrastructure, water towers that we have not been able to fix, because they have been deteriorated. A lot of people don't realize this about the city of International Falls, but we're debt-free. So whatever we have, that's what we have to spend. We, we, we have not historically been able to bond. We were able to bond for these, these projects that we have going on right now, because we have the set income from the 1% sales tax. So this is the first time we've been able to bond for a bigger project to do a lot of roads, a lot of streets, a lot of sewer. Up until now, we've had to wait until we have three or four years' worth of taxes and save up. And once we save up enough, then we can do a project. But that project's now 12 to 15% higher than it was five years ago when we started to save money for that project. We're one of very few cities in the United States that cannot go into debt. So, when we're looking at this sales tax, yeah, we're bringing in more money right now on that sales tax than what we had intended, which is fantastic. But we can only get the 30 million. It's 30 years or $30 million. So, this year, I believe we're at 1.2 million that we brought in so far. We were hoping to get 880,000. All that's gonna do is put a little bit more money into funding projects that were outlined specifically by the, by the state of Minnesota when we applied for that, for that sales tax. We can't use that money for anything else. Now, the reason that we're looking at a 14% sales increase this year is to do the roads that are not on those lists. We can only use the city sales tax for those projects that were outlined, because they were so far behind. You have to do a water tower every 20 years. We have two water towers that need to be done. Each one of those is about a million dollars. We did one this year. We're looking at doing another one next year. The 700,000, or, I don't want to quote numbers, because that's where I get really messed up. The 14% that we're looking at raising our infrastructure this year, or raising the levy this year, is gonna be put into a maintenance fund to continue the road so that they don't become what we've had in the past. The big theory on this 1% is by the time all of this is said and done, we can be caught up.
There's, there's There's never an end.
It's never gonna end. You're absolutely right. But, that's what the goal is. We're not trying to hide anything from people. I mean, we do have, we have meetings five, five times a month. And the, the reality is, is Public Works has had an update on the Cary Park project every single meeting for the last year.
Can I, can I add something? So, with the, with the 14%, so we cut the budget, we're actually gonna, we're looking to put away 700. The 14% raises three, but we cut another four. We're putting seven away.
Why is now the time to do that, though? Like, why of the costs and the economy of the, the community is this the time to be raising taxes and adding that burden onto them? And I do recall the conversation about the Rec Commission, and part of that conversation that I also recall was that the, there was a discussion amount about the city has all these little pocket parks, and with the decreasing population, a decreasing school base, a decreasing children, part of the question was, are we gonna continue to invest in all of these little pocket parks? Are we gonna do something big like update Cary Park? So now, again, we're paying for all of it. We're doing, you just rattled off all the parks we updated, and they look beautiful and it's great. And so then another like 15 million on top of Cary Park, just because the arena went out, and Rotary was looking for a home for this splash park. Like, is not, like, they're tied up in that, but that is, to me, like, a separate project. That, the Rotary said, I want a home for this, and then this is where that's gonna go.
We could cancel that 15 million, and it just goes away. It's not like we can take that 15 million and put it anywhere else. So we could, we could stop the project, we could stop the project, and the 15 million just goes away. They don't make the investment to the community.
But that, that's, I think, where, where I think we have to get past, past the, the Cary. So, the city has set aside hundreds of thousands of dollars for fixing Cary Park. Whether it's, it's your, your, your playground equipment over there, whether it's, it's for the road reconstruction, which we have set money as aside for that, whether it's for, we don't have the money to just fix the, the $2 million arena. I mean, I'll be honest, we don't have that money. But we have set monies aside to fix the baseball field. So I mean, we can keep everything the way it is, and it'll run all the monies that we've saved for that project out, and we'll have nothing more than what we have now. We're applying for a grant. I think that's the way we have to look at this. We're applying for a grant.
I think that we just don't consider state funding free money. I think that we all pay state taxes, and all government runs off of somebody's tax dollars. So this is not only taking back kind of taxpayer money that our community contributed to the state and getting that brought back up here, as you point to elsewhere, but also other communities, and saying, your tax dollars are worth of investment here. And this, this could be, like, again, it's not, like, it's not a criticism of the project. We understand that that 15, that, that Cary Park, number aside, is totally separate from this tax increase. So it's the, it's the power combination of the two that just feels like an incredible potential expenditure when you're looking at the scope and the scale of what's going on on Cary Park, to say, we've watched you struggle. That's what we said. We've watched their struggle to be able to contribute to a community center that's already in existence, and it's a small portion of their budget. We watch about, to the community center, to, to different things like that. The whole thing about investing in the parks and where do we go? And so, to just see of all the need in our community today of where we sit, and primarily, you know, our, our biggest drum has been beating on housing, and that need is ultimately for the workforce, is to bring the people in, is, you know, it is, it, it, it's more comfortable to know if there's simultaneous projects happening in other areas that contribute, which feels like a more economic development, right? Like, the, the city comp plan didn't say, go remake Cary Park into the school. I didn't see that in there. What I saw was develop the riverfront, and talk about that over there.
It, it, it's in there. I don't remember what page it's in there, but yes, it says to build exactly what we're talking about right now. A multi-use generate, a multi-generational use facility which can house a daycare, daycare facilities. It's all in there. It, very similar to a YMCA, I believe, is what it says in there.
The Y, okay. Well, and, and again, it could. It's not, it's not the thing of the project. It's, it's
But you're bringing up a valid point.
Funding and the disclosures of that.
But you're bringing up a valid point. Have you, that, we are looking at, at all the legs of what's wrong with our community. We don't, we, we need housing. We understand that. We just, at our last EDA meeting, appropriated $35,000 to look at getting a city planner to look at building out additional housing in the city. We, we have put monies toward that. We are looking at purchasing some property to be able to utilize some of our HRA, our, our HRA powers through the EDA for housing. Those are things that this council has been doing. We understand that we need to have more manufacturing. I guarantee you, we're, we're looking at that as well. There are, there are multiple aspects, aspects of what we're trying to do right now, but it's, it's a combination between housing and infrastructure and recreation and EDA, you know, I mean, we have a lot of stuff that's going on, and these are all, all public meetings. But I, I, I don't know what else to do, and that's one of the big conversations that we have in so many outlets. How do you get your information out there? I would guess of the subscriptions of the newspaper, a lot of people that are not reading the newspaper just read the headlines and make up their story from there. If you have it on Facebook, you me, you know, people don't read all of the information. You put it on the radio, and not everyone listens to it. I don't know how to get our information out, except for we have, we have set meetings, we have all of our information for all public meetings. We don't have conversations outside this building. I don't know what else to say. I, 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 I understand where you're coming from, and I believe you wholeheartedly. I don't know how to, how local government can give out any more information than the fact that we sit in this room and have every discussion, and every meeting is written on our front door, it's on our website, it's posted on our Facebook page. I, I don't know how else to get out the information.
Well, and I, and I, I don't have all the answers for that either. The, you know, community communication is the challenge of anybody trying to do mass communication. So, we, we definitely understand that as well. Um, so we, we definitely understand that as well. I think that, you know, again, I, I appreciate that, yes, it's out there. I, I think it's just topical about that and I think it was, you know, that was. Again, a format that was used by many and in the past and COVID broke was having this, the mayor specifically, if not the city come and do a lunch and learn. It was an opportunity to just talk with the public, right? They would come and to be able to provide some of those updates to the people who. Right, are wanting to attend something like that and it would just be a bullet list of, you know, because there are multiple. Things moving and, and while they're in committee, not everybody can attend every committee meeting to have. An oversight of what's going on and not every committee is summarized understandably so at every council meeting either about what's happening. It would just extend meetings sometimes on, right, beyond necessary. Um, so I, I think that part of it was that. So I appreciate your candor and your response to that. I think, you know, part of it was timing and we were looking at, right? As you reflected and responded as well about, you know, maybe where, you know, you, you need the scope to go to that. But again, something that had just such a big price tag just did not feel. And again, it's just, it's in light of everything. The, the updates, the road work, the infrastructures, all of that. Like done by the city to date is of course appreciated and, and people comment and value. The improvements when you're the streetscape, when they're in our community and driving around and all of that is great, right? That makes the roads that still need the work, understand why we supported that and where that's gonna come. I think it just feels like a lot happening at once and at a time where we're just, you know, we're, we're not, I, I. My perspective is we're not the most stable economy right now out there in a way, right? Businesses by industry are different. I think this workforce impact is still there. When you see the census numbers that. Percentage wise, like Kuchichin County of which, you know, the city of International Falls is the greatest population contributor to. Lost the most percentage wise, again, not numbers because we don't have it of any county in the state. I mean, tho- those are things that it, it feels like there should be different types of protections or spending decreases or. Adjustments, like we're highly concerned about what happens when the city population drops below five thousand. I mean. And that's what we're aiming towards and I'm understanding is your LGA calculations and things greatly change. And so if, if this is being, you know, as, as, as the expenditures continue to grow. And the population continues to decrease, that's just the primary area of concern as well. So in all of it. So the budget is one thing which we totally understand that that doesn't include this and that again has its own concerns. I mean, looking at the twenty twenty over twenty nineteen audit, I mean. That your expenditures, it said like increased sixty-six percent, like business that's, that's large, knowing that that is being paid by. Outside entities in a way. And so to, to see that and have big projects coming in. You know, and again, if, if that's the timeliness, if there's a, a, at this point in the project or this date is a point where we expect to be able to do. A bigger reveal. If at the, you know, could we go through all this cost and time and you don't get the grant and the whole project fizzles out? I mean, are there other funding ways? Is that kind of where community support to help even have stakeholders at the table? And, you know, more broadly signed on and aware of and, and supporting and help rally that we feel would only be beneficial. And so when we looked at being that, we just felt like that was an education gap that just prevented us at that time from signing on. So again, not in a whole like note of the project, just in the overall, like we just, we. We just had questions. So.
I know, I read your email.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So I, I guess that, that's really what we just kind of wanted to come and say and reiterate. And, and we hope that there is an opportunity, then we'll wait. It sounds like in, in due time or sometime. A more specific topical meeting of Kerry Park.
And, and that was one of the conversations that I had actually this morning with the costume group too, is to have a, a meeting with. Have him come in as well as us with uh more information because we're still waiting. Right now, the only information that we have is uh on phase one. We have a, a complete uh. Dollar amount on phase one. It was um, it was in our packet last, uh, last meeting, wasn't it? Anyways. But anyways, we, we have phase one. We have the information for phase one, which is the splash park, the road uh going in, the changing room. Um, information on that. That's all we have right now. We do have a dollar amount, an estimated dollar amount of the fifteen point three nine. Once we get uh a full scope of what the project is. Uh, you know, we, we want to definitely have that conversation with the chamber and not just the chamber. We want to have that conversation with the community as a whole. Because there is, the questions that you put on that, on your Microsoft Word thing, those are great questions. Those are all questions that I want to be able to answer to everyone. You, you had mentioned housing. You had mentioned, uh, you had mentioned, you know, the uh. How are we funding it? How, you know, we, we're doing all of that work right now. We do have a group under the costume group that is helping us. Stage what we have to charge for daycare facilities to use that building. So that they're paying for their fair share for the kitchen. To how much do we have to rent the facility for, for a concert? How much do we have to rent the facility for, for wedding? You know, those are the, the questions that we need to have answered before we go to the public. Because if we don't have those answers, then we look foolish. But we also need to do our due diligence so that we can answer the questions for ourselves before we go in. And that's a, you know, that's part of the process. It's a, it's a crappy process. I get it, but all of the information is coming through. Meetings in this room and I will, to be honest. Ninety-nine percent of all of the, the Kerry Park project is coming through Public Works. Because it is a Public Works project at some point. So that's where ninety, ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of all of the updates come through is Public Works. And uh, the city administrator is working on part of it. I'm working on part of it. But everything comes through Public Works. We get u- updates there and when it has to come to the council as a whole for. Um, the council to make a decision, that's where we have the conversations is in this room at the council meetings. So. I, I, I appreciate it. We'll, we'll be in touch to have, have a conversation because we, we do need to get that information out.
Well, and I appreciate your time this evening. I appreciate, I mean, we, again, all the work that you've put on there are, you know, part of our mission is always to jointly. Partner with you and our intention is always to serve for the better of this community. And so when, when there's projects and things that, that we can involve and we can help share messaging back and, and, and give input to. We're always available and open to that.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to come forward to uh, for a public hearing? Our audience, please.
Hello, counsel. Um, so first off, I'd like to thank uh Mayor Droba. Uh, I asked for the budget last week and he was nice enough to deliver it um to me at work.
We got a name and. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Um, I just have a couple of questions, actually not even about the budget, really uh more about the procedure as to how this is followed. I guess who, how often do you monitor the budget? Uh, right? Like you write the budget? Do you have, does city administration go through it daily, weekly? Right? Before every council meeting, right? And write up your expenditures?
Qu- quarterly, I believe. Is that correct, Emma?
No, they're, they're done at minimum monthly basis. Yeah, I mean Brad, Brad, our finance officer is meticulous with his budget. If he was here, he could speak more to that process.
Okay, great. The second is the, the very first item on the, the budget that was given to me was property tax revenue. And from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, there was a, um, not quite a one and a half percent drop roughly um in property tax revenue. But your budgeted amount from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one is a twenty percent drop. And I'm wondering why that is.
I will have to ask those questions to Brad. I don't have that information.
Because when we spoke last, it was three hundred and fifty thousand we were short and that twenty percent is a little over two hundred K. And that property still exists within the city of International Falls, I'm sure, right? So somebody should be paying the tax on that is, is my understanding.
But, but the, see, and that's where, that's where net tax capacity, net, or tax value, valuations, assessments. All of that comes through uh the county tax assessor. So I mean, we would have to ask some additional questions on that. Because every year, I know way too much about taxes. Every year, the um, the taxes get reset. I mean, obviously we have a piece of a pie, right? International Falls is a set area. The value will go up or down depending on what's happened. Like I, I spoke with uh, I spoke with the tax assessor. Um, all residential properties in the city of International Falls, the land value is going up ten percent this year. So um, depending on what that happens with houses, it could come down. Some years they depreciate, some years it goes up. A lot of that gets dictated by uh the Minnesota Department of Revenue. He's the one, Department of Revenue is the one who has him make those decisions. Um, on how, how he balances, I believe that's the Board of Equalization that deals with that. However, the, the value, you're absolutely right. It could go up, it could go down on any given year. So I don't have that information until we were to talk to Brad or to uh, to lend to have that conversation.
Okay. I would like permission from council to inquire with city department heads, right? As to the budget, I have some questions, but I think they're, they're better directed to the department heads. Um, not necessarily the council uh regarding some of their expenditures and I'd like to know if that's okay. Um, for me to discuss that with them, if, if they're, they have time and are willing to do so.
I, I, I would say speak with Betty, the city administrator and have that conversation with uh, with her first and then.
I don't want to overstep my bounds in any capacity.
Yeah, no, no big deal.
And try to be as respectful.
And a lot of the, I, I guarantee all of the, or a lot of the questions that you're looking at asking are the exact questions for the December sixth. Uh, truth and taxation meeting. So I would love for you to be prepared for that. So please do talk to.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what I'm working towards. Um, following in line with uh Ms. Hyble. As far as the Kerry part, project goes, right? Was, is there a, um, a performance clause? In place with this firm, um, this lobbying firm that you consulted with?
No, but if, if for whatever reason, we, it's two thousand dollars a month and we can cancel that at any time. So as of right now, we're in for four thousand dollars.
I understand, but if at the end of the fifteen month term, right, if they haven't delivered. Right? I, what, what recourse do we have? Do we get that money back?
No.
Right? We're just eating that. And why is there not?
I don't believe that that is something that you would be putting in for a grant writer or for a lobbyist. I mean, they're still fighting, they're still working on our behalf. Whether, whether they get uh, get the funding or not. They're still working on, on. The city's behalf at the state. They're representing us during those uh, those hearings and conversations.
Okay. And then my, my, my only other question is, and I, this has been litigated before this council on numerous occasions. The city budget list that your anticipated blight fines were six thousand dollars for the year. Um, to date through June, which is what I had, right? And we had collected a hundred and fifty dollars of that. Right? But I believe you said there was thirty-six. Cases going through the court system right now on blight infractions? I believe that's what you said last month.
A lot more than a hundred fifty dollars collected.
So I can speak to that a little bit more. So you're looking at the blight fines revenues and that's a little bit. Different because we've now implemented a fire marshal. And under our C audit, we're not allowed to what they call wash expenses and revenues. So now we have to recognize all income that comes in. So whether they're paying a hundred fifty dollar blight fine. Or they're paying a hundred fifty dollar blight fine plus cost of services that are performed for lawn cleanup. So all of that money is going in there. So we have not necessarily. You know, you might have a five hundred dollar bill, a hundred fifty dollars of that is a fine, but the remaining three hundred fifty dollars is for services performed. So you have a, an, an expense to basically offset some of that.
Right.
So. It's not all for fines essentially. It's a little bit different. It's a little bit more involved.
Okay.
It, it seemed rather foolish to me when I first read it that we're spending seventy thousand dollars a year for a fire marshal, right? Plus, you know, um, right to gain six thousand dollars worth of value. That, that seemed like a, you know. A huge disconnect there, right?
Yeah.
You know, that in the business world, I mean, you'd be bankrupt if you continued to do it that way.
Yeah.
You know, and it just didn't seem like we were getting our monies worth, but I'm just curious.
Well, and, and I love that because we're touching on, I love that. This is like the best city council meeting ever. So one of the things that we're touching on right now is the fire marshal position. And the fire marshal position not only is being funded by uh, by the fines and the stuff that, that's coming out of. Uh, his job. There's also um additional funds that are paying for that through. Um, the rental licensing, which we're able to help some of the housing issues that we're having in the community. Uh, being able to have uh people have him come in. We've fixed a couple of houses. We've had some issues with CO2 that was like legitimately an issue uh for a property. So a lot of his, his salary is now being paid for. By um services that have not been offered or maintained in our community in the past. So I, I, I appreciate you bringing up the fire marshal position specifically.
Yeah, no, and not that I have a problem. I get that there was, you know, many properties that were derelict.
Yep.
You know, and neglected. I didn't want to argue that. I was just.
Yeah.
Wanted to draw the parallel between value and express.
Yep, yep.
So, no, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Greatly appreciate it. Anybody else want to bring anything up on audience? All right. So we will go down to the consent agenda. We have a um approved licenses as presented. We have uh border boost, restaurant license, Dairyland Operations LLC. DBA Duncan Baskin Robbins Restaurant License, Dollar Tree Stores. Dollar Tree number uh thirty-six ninety-four for fireworks license. Icebox Investment LLC, DBA Dairy Queen International Falls for a restaurant license. Jim's Disposal Services, Garbage Holler License. Caliphenter. Hey, thanks. Synergy LLC doing business as McDonald's International Falls Restaurant License. KNV Restaurants doing business as Subway International Falls Restaurant License. Menards thirty-five oh seven fireworks uh license. Pete Ham Food Service, DBA. Hardee's International Falls Restaurant License, Russo Res- Renovations LLC, Snowplow License. Sarah Nevilleinen Massage Therapy LLC Massage Individual License. Sound North Pond Broker License. Uh, with established business and Up North Builders Incorporated Snowplow License. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden. There's no discussion on the consent agenda. Chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. We'll go to new business. We have the mayoral proclamation establishing November as Family Caregivers Month. Chair would entertain a motion for that proclamation.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of the Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance Grant Contract. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those uh, that contract. We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to uh application for citizens for Bacchus AB. For a Sunday license, Sunday liquor license effective December one uh through December thirtieth, thirty-first. Twenty twenty-one. Chair would entertain a motion for that liquor license.
Make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Emma, I have a question. Um, why? I didn't realize that they didn't already have this. I know they've had a liquor license in the past, just not Sunday.
So not Sunday. So typically they don't do their events on Sunday and the business office from Bacchus has reached out to us specifically. They have an um entity that wants to hold an event on a Sunday evening and they would like liquor and. Um, the state of Minnesota doesn't permit them to do at one time, you know, so they have to go through this process. They're not. They're not looking to renew for the new year. This is a one-time event. So thus it's in front of you.
With that being said, are we, uh, giving a prorated, um, amount on, on the cost or?
I believe that was a discussion. Um, I, I don't know. I, I didn't ask, but I do know that was a discussion point. Um, it's, it's, I think it's a very minimal fee, so I, I don't recall what the decision was, but that was a conversation between law and, and administration.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, all right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Just, uh, just a quick council, uh, question. In the event that it is not prorated, would the council be, um, open to having it prorated for a Sunday liquor license for one week? Can I take a motion just to make sure that that's, uh, recorded?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. So we have a, we have a second by Counselor Kraus.
That's my name.
I just didn't hear correct. All right. We have a motion in a second to, uh, have it prorated for the one month. We have a motion. Now, we already made the motion or we've already voted on it. So we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have, uh, um, request for 2022 license renewals that, uh, include tobacco or alcohol. First one, uh, counsel, I, I'll leave it to you. Do you want to make this as one, uh, one motion or do you want them individually? Does anyone have any issue with any of them? Okay, so I'll just read them off. Border Oil, uh, company doing business as the jug liquors for a cigarette license and an off sale liquor license. Holiday Station Store doing business as Holiday Station Store 509, 32 off sale license and a cigarette license, gasoline pump license and a restaurant license. Howard's Senex LLC cigarette license, restaurant license and gasoline pumps license. IYS Ventures LLC doing business as I Mart Stores, 1709 Second Street West. Looking for a cigarette license, 32 off sale license, gasoline pump license and a restaurant license. IYS Ventures LLC, DBA I Mart Stores, 301 Fourth Street. Uh, cigarette license, fireworks license, 32 off sale license, gasoline pumps license and restaurant license. Miners Incorporated, DBA County Market Foods, 32 off sale license, cigarette license, uh, gasoline pumps license and restaurant license. Orton, uh, Motor Incorporated, DBA Orton's International Falls Senex. Cigarette license, gasoline pumps license and 32 off sale license. And finally, Super One Liquor LLC, DBA County, County Market Liquor. A cigarette license, off sale, uh, liquor license. Chair would entertain a motion to approve all of those licenses.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the council? If not, we'll go to reports of the administrator, attorney and department heads. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, uh, been extremely busy, uh, a lot of, uh, effort going into union negotiations at this point. Uh, we've, uh, the negotiating committees, uh, met, uh, with two of the three unions that we negotiate with and, uh, are exchanging, uh, proposals. We have a, a session tomorrow afternoon at four o'clock, uh, another negotiating session. Uh, so that's progressing. Um, very busy day, uh, in court today, uh, had 30 of the city's criminal cases in court today. Uh, only one of those was a blight case, but in that particular case, uh, the property owner, uh, did end up pleading guilty. Um, they have corrected the issue, uh, but because of the delay and the things that went on, uh, as part of the disposition, they needed to pay $150 administrative fee. Uh, and then also, uh, the disposition is contingent upon their not having any further blight issues for the next year. Uh, and that's kind of the standard disposition that we're moving towards. Yeah. Uh, and, um, so there is, uh, a big hammer hanging over their head that if, if they, uh, have further issues, repeat violations within the next year, they've already pled guilty and there's potential of up to 90 days in jail and up to a fine of a thousand dollars that could be imposed. Uh, so, uh, making good progress in that area. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Have you heard anything, uh, additionally about the Kutaska Building?
We've not heard back from them. That I'm, I haven't heard back and I don't know. Betty's not here. Uh, Betty would probably be the person that they would reach out to, but I'm, I'm not aware that they have responded. I know they, they had some meetings they wanted to address it to and, and, uh, I, I mean, every, every indication was that it was, was positive and something they wanted to do. They just needed to have approval from their board.
Fantastic. Uh, any other questions for the city attorney? Okay, we'll move on to department heads. Chief Koszuk, do you have anything? I, I want to say thank you to, uh, uh, you and your officers. I had requested of you to have, uh, someone, uh, represent the, the city with the, um, the veterans, uh, suicide, uh, community conversation. And, uh, we had two officers there and I represented the city as well. Um, I greatly appreciate that. And I also say thank you to you and your staff for last night, having officers out there with the kids. I think that, uh, it was fantastic and wonderful. So thank you and your staff for that. They did a great job. Thank you. Uh, reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Um, anybody have anything? I, I was just going to say that I met with, uh, Senator Bach and Representative Eklund this morning. Uh, with that being said, I think we've hammered that one home. Um, uh, it sounds like, uh, they are both on board and, uh, they see the, the need and the, the, um, credibility of what we're looking at doing. So we'll keep moving forward and we'll continue giving updates. Uh, anybody else in the audience have anything to bring forward? All right. Our next, uh, sit in your packet, you have, uh, correspondence from the Visitors and Convention Bureau, International Falls Rec Commission, uh, Board Meetings Minutes and, uh, Minnesota Department of Transportation News Release on the 53. Our, remember on November 11th, we will be, uh, closed for Veterans Day. Our next regular city council meeting is going to be Monday, November 15th, 2021. Next week, uh, we are scheduled to have a committee of the whole meeting. It is my intention to, uh, be at that meeting virtually. I'll be out of town. Um, unlike some people at this room, I assume, uh, I will not be at the Deer, Deer Shack, so, um, I, I highly suggest if you guys can't make it in person, please try to be here online. Joe Kraus.
Thursday, 2:30 is Public Works meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, Thursday at 2:30 is the Public Works meeting.
I will be attending that meeting virtually. I will not be here for the regular city council meeting on the following Monday.
Okay.
I am leaving on Thursday and it's my intention to stay that way.
Excellent.
See you guys in Thanksgiving.
All right. We, with no other business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.